It is now six thirty and I ask that you please join us for the invocation to be given by Don Ash, our emergency manager, director, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Let us pray. Eternal Father God, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity, God, to come together and work on the business of this community, God, but always giving you praise in everything we do. Lord, we ask you to bless these commissioners, God, bless this county, God, bless the leaders and the management team and the people that work to do the will of this community, God. Lord, let us thank you and think about you in this season, for you are truly the reason for this season. We give you praise, honor, and glory in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we welcome everyone to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. It is now called to order. We do have several adjustments to our agenda that has been published. The following planning and zoning items have been postponed. The first one is RZ nineteen fourteen, which is General Holdings Unlimited requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to residential single-family for property located at fourteen ninety-six Millers Mill Road. The second public hearing is RZ one nine two one, JWA Ventures requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to mixed-use for property located at one oh nine Old Kellytown Road. The next public hearing that has been postponed is COMP-am-one-nine-one-two, JWA Ventures requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located at one oh nine Old Kellytown Road. The next public hearing that has been postponed is COMP-am-one-nine-one-one, James H. Nutt requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located on the north side of Hampton Locust Grove Road to the north of Brindley Way. The next public hearing that has been postponed is RZ one nine two zero, James H. Hut Nutt, I'm sorry, requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to single-family residence for property located on the north side of Hampton Locust Grove Road to the north of Brindley Way. And then we had other amendments to the agenda. One, those planning and zoning items that were just read will be removed. We have to add an appointment from District Three to the Henry County Development Authority to be placed on the agenda after the library board appointment. And then we're going to remove Items fifteen B, which from Financial Services, which is a resolution regarding compliance audit of cable franchise fees. We're going to add a resolution allocating stormwater funds to make infrastructure repairs at Cochrane Park to be placed on the agenda under the Board of Commissioners meeting. So those are the postponements and amendments to the agenda. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to first.
We have a motion?
Say.
And a second. Any further changes, revisions, please note them now. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so it passes five to one with the changes that were noted. We're now moving to Item Five, which is the appointment to the Zoning Advisory Board. And at this time, it is the position that Pete Peterson is going to be filling an unexpired term that was previously held by Willie Brown. So that appointment of Pete Peterson, he served on the Zoning and Advisory Board previously, and I am now reappointing him. So I call for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I didn't see Commissioner Thomas's hand. Okay, was that a unanimous? Okay, okay, so unanimous decision on that. The other appointment we have is to fill an unexpired term on the Henry First Board. That was previously held by Don Donlap, and I'm now reappointing Ms. Vanessa W. Thomas to fill the unexpired term on the Henry First Board. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Our appointments, I guess, okay, never mind, because we're not district. Okay.
Right. Okay, okay, and, okay, all right, so any questions? Okay, so the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion?
Say.
And a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll now move to the appointment on the library board. This is Commissioner Thomas's of District Four, appointment of Chester Ivy, filling an unexpired term through the expiration of twelve thirty-one twenty-two. So the floor is now open for any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? I mean, a motion, I'm sorry. I need a motion.
Motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that appointment is made. And then as we previously noted through the agenda, Commissioner Barm of District Three is appointing Eddie Osborne to fill an unexpired term, and that's through twelve thirty-one twenty. Are there any questions or comments? The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Say.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that appointment is also made. And I do need to make a note for the record that the appointment of Pete Peterson for that unexpired term is through twelve thirty-one twenty, twenty twenty, and also that for Ms. Vanessa W. Thomas, who's filling an unexpired term, and that expiration date for that appointment will be twelve thirty-one twenty twenty as well.
Twenty twenty? Okay, twenty, okay, come on, say, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, so I just wanted to make that clear for the records as well. We're now invite up our county manager, Ms. Sherri Hopson Matthews, for comments.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. This evening, as we embark upon entering our twenty twenty year, I wanted to take this opportunity to provide to the board and to our residents a year-end review. So I do have a quick video, and then I will have a couple of comments at the end of the video. As we close out twenty nineteen, the staff of Henry County Government wants to thank you, the citizens, for your support in allowing us to serve you. Over seventeen hundred employees, thirty departments, and partner agencies have worked diligently throughout the year to provide quality services. Here are a few highlights from twenty nineteen. Board, we have a lot to be thankful for. Our entire team, with the support of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, we have done a lot in twenty nineteen. It's amazing to know that we've provided over seventy thousand trips for residents in Henry County through our Transit Department. We responded to almost five thousand calls for animal care and control and a host of other things. And so this afternoon or this evening, I not only wanted to take the time to thank our staff, but to also thank the Board of Commissioners for making sure that we had the funding in place to make sure that we were able to provide services to our residents. So at this time, I do want to personally thank our entire staff for all of their hard work, and certainly looking forward to moving into twenty twenty, providing, if not better, the same level of service that we provided in twenty nineteen. And then finally, during the last board meeting, there were a lot of conversation, or there was a lot of conversation about our wrecker policy, and wanted to update the board to let you all know that we have had a couple of meetings, or our public safety team has had several meetings internally to discuss some next steps. Our deputy county manager has been in consultation with our county attorney, and Major Richard Hornet in our PD Department is actually reviewing the policy and will be bringing some recommendations back to the management team. And hopefully, we will be able to make some amendments to the current policy, but I wanted you all to be aware of that. At this time, I'll be available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Well, first of all, I want to just commend all of our employees and also you and your leadership team. And so when you went through that year-end review, I think it did just highlight all of the great things that's been happening under your leadership and with the support of the Board of Commissioners. One other thing we'd like to highlight is that we just got a notification that our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending twenty eighteen has now qualified for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence. And so we want to commend also all of the departments, but also our financial team that has done that. And I also, in addition to all that you stated, say I want to commend the team for that conversion that we are still going through, but it was major to go through the Tyler system as well. So I definitely applaud you, our whole deputy county manager, and also the whole leadership team, but also all of the employees who are working so very hard to serve our citizens. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
And Sheriff, what I did omit one thing. We will be having a kickoff meeting for our Census Committee on January sixth. More information will go out. Don Ash, who oversees our EMA and E nine one one team, will be spearheading our Census Committee team. And so I know that I've received from some of the board members individuals who'd like to participate. That information has been sent over to Mr. Ash, who will be making contact with all of the individuals who have elected to or in need or would like to participate with that committee. And so I wanted the board to be aware that we will have our first kickoff meeting on January sixth to kick off our Henry County Census Count Committee. So I do apologize for not providing that information earlier.
Do we have a time for when that's going to occur?
Ten AM.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We commend you again. Thank you. All right, we'll now move into our next item, which is a presentation by the Elections and Registration Group. And understand, Mr. Grayson Davis, our election supervisor, will be making that presentation. And we welcome you, and please let Ms. Lott know that she's in our thoughts and prayers as well. Okay?
All right, so this is basically just a summary of pretty much what we've done this year and some of our actual future challenges. So we actually broke down how many registered voters. We've raised about three thousand by the last time we did this presentation back in June. So we are actually just shy of a hundred and eighty thousand. So we will realistically break that within a month. We did a breakdown of the applications we've processed, which is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand this year. And we also provided a breakdown of the actual registered voters in each district. And similar to June, District Two does have the most, followed closely by District Three. If you do add up the numbers, you will see that there's a slight difference, and that's just because we have fifty-two voters that are currently in what's called pending status, and in pending status, they aren't actually assigned to any commission district. So I'm not going to read through all these, but this is basically because we get asked quite frequently, what do we do on our off time? And so we just included a bunch of the random things that you'll see us doing in the office when we're not actively hosting an election. And a big thing to note is a lot of these, they actually build up when we have an election year. So after next year, we're probably going to have a buildup of about twenty thousand registration applications just during the major elections. So we also always are constantly going back through and updating the records. But one of the big things that we do do is we have open record requests, and everyone always seems to be interested in our processes and everything. And so we actually spend during busy time about six hours at least a week on open records requests and just getting all the items. But I'm not going to read all of these. It's just good information if you guys ever kind of want to look at it. So as everyone is hopefully aware, we are transitioning to a new voting equipment system. We haven't received our new equipment yet. We are expecting to receive it all in mid to late January, assuming everything goes according to plan. The state was delayed a little bit because of certain litigation that was filed against them. But these are actually the units that we will be using, and we definitely encourage all residents to stop by our office Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM. And we actually have a demo unit set up, so we can walk anyone that is interested at all in the process, we can walk them through the new units. So we highly encourage that and are definitely hoping we see a lot of people come out there. And for those of you who aren't aware where our office is, it is forty Atlanta Street in McDonough. Oh, that is really small. So this is a breakdown of actually what the state is spending just in regards to Henry County. The total amount on the far right, that's the two million dollars, that is what the state has purchased in equipment just for Henry County. And we did a breakdown based on all the different equipment, and as you can see, total, we are actually going to end up with over sixteen hundred pieces of equipment. So we are basically increasing our inventory from a little under six hundred that we have right now, and we're going to go up to sixteen hundred. One thing that we are excited about is at the conference in Savannah, the state actually mentioned that they are going to have grants. And we're trying to get more information right now, but the information that was initially provided is that there will be a three-to-one matchup of up to fifteen thousand dollars in security and accessibility, and they'll also match up to one-to-one to ten thousand dollars for just anything in general for the election process. Before we want to go more in depth, we're definitely trying to find out the distribution, if we're only allowed to do one of them, or how that works. But we have contacted our state liaison, and as soon as we have more information, we'll definitely give it to the board. So these are our biggest challenges that we are facing. And like I mentioned, we have sixteen hundred pieces of equipment that we're going to have to find storage for. And one of the other big thing is transportation. So typically, where at any precinct, we would send anywhere from eight to ten machines, most precincts are going to be anywhere closer to sixteen to twenty machines. So it's going to definitely increase transportation for Election Day, and it's just going to be a lot more space. Another thing about the system that's going to be a challenge is all the paper ballot for the audit trails. Each one of those will have to be maintained for two years. So that means after a general election, we are looking at anywhere from sixty to eighty additional boxes that we are going to have to find storage for and maintain for two years. And these are some of the other challenges we've had, but the biggest one right now is definitely space and storage. And that is actually my last slide, if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. So are there any questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll go to Commissioner Clemens. Commissioner Thomas?
My question is, have you had the conversation with the state about insurance on these voting units?
So currently, they are insured for two years through the state.
For two years with the state? And then we have to pick up the tab from that point?
If we want to keep them under warranty, yes.
Okay.
As for that price, the state has not released what that cost will be yet.
Okay. And have you, have they said what type of storage is required, like humidity-free or anything of that nature? That they have to be, and are they sensitive to environment, anything like that?
So we're expecting it'll be similar to the current machines, where it has to be climate-controlled, so you do want to keep it lower humidity. They haven't released exact regulations. The State Election Board is actually in the process of meeting and to write those rules and regulations to release to the counties.
And you know, I came to one of your trainings, and these machines above, they're big.
Yes.
Now, are they giving you some type of container to store them in, or do we have to master that as well?
So the state is going to give us a, almost like a bag, kind of a collapsible box, to actually move the units around, but for actual storage and the situation of carts, we don't have anything. Currently, and the state's not going to provide anything. We do have a bunch of metal carts that we currently use for the existing equipment, but until we get all of the new equipment in, we're not going to be sure if we can convert it over and use it.
Now, when this equipment goes to the new polling sites, and we have several new polling sites, I know that the state is ensuring the machine and its function. What about the security of the machine? Are we responsible for getting insurance, like it happened in another county, of the machines being stolen or something of that nature?
So yes, we will be responsible for the security. And one of the grants that is actually available, the three-to-one reimbursement, is in relation to security for the machines.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Yes, I saw the list that you guys had of what you all are doing outside of actual election days. I'm really concerned about the voter election, and I know that prior to us changing precinct locations, that there was some information that was sent out, but it was sent out one time, one round around. I want to know if there's any other attempts to send out information about polling location changes, more education in the different districts and areas, because if everything is going on on forty Atlanta Street, but the majority of your voters are on the west side of the county, then they don't often get the information, or they cannot often come to the east side of the county for that information. So what type of access are you being available to, for commissioners to have you to come into the areas and the districts to give that education? And two, are you going to send out more information about the precinct changes, and when will that be? And three, I need to talk to you a little bit about the purging of voters' rolls and how it's affecting Henry County, and how many will we reduce based on the purge, and are we expecting more to be dropped from our rolls in Henry County? So I know that's a lot, but...
All right, well, I'll start with first. You mentioned any commissioners wanting to host events around the county. The offices, we are more than willing, and if you ever have a location, we will definitely send people out. We can bring the units to have a demo demonstration for you. We are more than willing to do that and would actually greatly appreciate the help in being able to spread the word. As in, as for the notice about polling place changes, we did post that in both the Legal Organ and the Henry Times. I know we posted it online. We had, we actually contacted the senior citizen, senior services and had that posted there. We contacted the tax assessors to actually have it posted at their locations. We reached out to over three hundred churches in the county to try to get a flyer posted. We contacted the libraries to try to get things posted there. And I don't have my list of everywhere we contacted in front of me. I know we also contacted about twelve to thirteen apartment complexes in the area in the Henry County to also have it posted there. And we did send out a letter and a mailing, and we can definitely look at sending out another one for the future. I know we did and are going to post it on our Facebook, and we don't have a Twitter, but we were looking at possibly trying to get a Twitter to reach more people in that regard also.
I would be interested in knowing, if you could get back with me, you can send me an email later in reference to if you guys have the budget to make sure that there are signs at the old precincts announcing where the new precincts are in those areas.
We can definitely do that, as long as we actually were returned all of the signs. We currently have those. We did post them at the previous precincts this time of year round, and it's just a stand about yay high that we actually put in front of the polling location, and it tells the voter where their new polling location is. But we can also look at getting more of those and posting them.
Okay. Thank you.
In regards to the purging, so Henry County had seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three voters that were removed from the voter rolls.
Seven, give me that number.
Seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three. No more are going to be purged. That was the whole process, and currently, we don't know if they're going to be reinstated. I know one of the judges is currently awaiting to rule on that, and I believe they're going to rule Thursday. And they're basically going to state if half of that amount is actually going to be reinstated.
And were those people in Henry County notified that they had been removed?
Yes, we did send out a mailing to everyone. That was effective.
Is that a public list?
It should be on the Secretary of State's website, yes. And we can provide you a redacted version.
I would want to, I would request a list of the seven thousand people that were removed.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, Mr. Davis, we appreciate this update. That was quite good information. And again, if you don't mind sending it to our county clerk to send to everyone else, because that was good information to hold on to.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will now move into our consent agenda items. We've got several. The first one is a resolution from the Department of Transportation accepting ownership of various public roadways, not included on the state highway system. We've got several from Sploesd. It is regarding the acquisition of property. And all three of the items that we have listed on this resolution are for West Village Parkway, and the parcels are for Parcels Twelve, Twenty-Six, and Thirty-Six. So those are items A, B, and C under the Sploesd item. And then under Elections and Registration, there's a resolution approving the award of a lease agreement for a modular unit for modular unit for elections and registration. Oops, I'm sorry. Seems like I kind of got ahead. Oh, so, no, that ends our consent agenda. So, we only had the Department of Transportation resolution and the three resolutions for the Sploes parcels at West Village Parkway. Does anyone care to have any of those removed for a further discussion? Seeing none, and hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, the consent agenda is approved as noted unanimously. We will now move to the next item, which is an elections and registration item. And this is a resolution to award a lease agreement for modular units for the Elections and Registration Department. And we invite up Mr. Brad Johnson and Mr. Hutch Purvis for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and good evening. As you heard from the presentation for the elections, two things is very important, is public safety and the fair elections for our community. We want to make sure we do everything we can to make sure that's where guidelines and, and make sure we are doing everything right. With the new equipment coming to election, it does pose several problems as outlined, especially the space allocation issue. And Hutch, being our Facilities Director, has worked with Tina on that. And the best solution we've found so far, after reaching out to other areas and other facilities, is to do some rental office space. And that rental office space will basically take the full administrative side of the current Atlanta Street locations, convert it into storage and to be the polling area for the new machines, and move the office staff in the parking lot over to the, to, just basically administrative area. Moving back, you just see the space right there to be renovated and moved out from administrative occupancy to an area for the new voting machines. Definitely time is a big issue we're having with this, is getting this project completed before the 2020 election period. The basic modular units is typical standard office, so very similar to Station 8 that we have at temporary housing for the fire station. But, it has your ADA accessible restrooms and your various office space, and also have an area for our citizens to come in and, and be helped. So, that's the picture to scanners, and we do have an outline, if interested, of seeing what the modular looks like and our proposal. So, from staff's recommendation is to remove the administrative office from the current Atlanta Street. It'd be a temporary until we find permanent housing with the time constraints we're in. Move them in the parking lot over and use that space to all the new ballot machines that we don't have storage space for. It'll be climate-controlled, secured, they'll have the cameras, and it'll be secured like we have now for security purposes, and move the administrative office to the, to the parking lot. This is, will be a up to three-year contract. Will be leased, the company will bring in the unit, set it up, Hutch's team will have the connections. And then, when we're done, we'll, once we have a permanent solution to our office, to our elections, space allocation, then we could actually send that temporary housing back to the, to the company. And if you have any questions, I'm definitely just the message reader, and the smart one here is, is Mr. Purvis. He's a facilities, he's the, can answer any technical questions that we might have.
Okay, well, we thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
So, the location, you said in the parking lot over?
Yes, well, told you, this is a smart one right here. They've got the diagrams, and he can definitely go through the project. He's the project head and, and looking at all the options.
So, this commissioner is directly behind 30 Atlanta Street, Public Defender's Building. I think I have a...
He has a diagram also to show you the overhead.
Overhead shot here. This will be the location for the modular unit. We'll be able to utilize the utilities coming in off the backside of the building.
Okay, so you're going to take up through four parking spaces?
We do have a large parking area down there, and at the bottom of the area, I guess the northwest side of the building complex. And it also keeps the, keeps the staff out there with machinery, with all the equipment they have. And we also have extras that could run the, when the vote polling starts, the administrative area have a force. You guys have been there, so congested to hopefully to open up that area when machines are in use, to have a better polling location. And this is temporary. This is just, we get a permanent fix.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Clement?
So, inside of the modular unit, that's where people will go in and vote?
No, ma'am, they'll vote in the existing.
They're still voting in the old building? You're going to have three people voting inside?
It'll be, actually, we'll actually, it'll be most triple the size of the old voting area, because we use the storage. But, then it'll be open during the voting processes. They'll have probably three times as much voting space they did last year.
For people to be inside of the building?
Yeah, so they're not standing outside.
Yes, okay.
And, and I just had a question, and I know you've gone through the safety. Can you expand on the safety of this modular unit for the administration staff? Just, you know, because when you think of modular, you think about weather conditions and all of that. So, could you elaborate on that?
Definitely like station eight, it'll be rated for wind capacity. It'll be tied down, anchored down. And part of our severe weather protocols, if people are, team are in them buildings during inclement weather, some will be relocated during emergencies to a more stable, which is across the end of 40 Atlanta Street building.
Great, thank you.
We're working with the city of McDonough, building the apartment and planning.
We'll make all codes and all of the, whatever everybody else has to go through for, the codes and everything. And we can meet our timeline, the middle of January to get this in place.
Awesome. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, we've heard the presentation. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion? And a second. Any comments or further questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you. It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, well, we'll move to our next item, which is a Henry County Fire Department resolution to approve the purchase of power stretchers, power load systems, and stair chairs. And so, we'll invite Captain Sam Polk for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wood, Commissioners. The Henry County Fire Department's been awarded an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $1,268,818 for the purpose of purchasing power stretcher, load, and loading systems, along with new stair chairs. This grant was the result of the Fire Department's mission to increase safety for our patients as well as our personnel. Wrong way, sorry. So, part of the reason for doing this, first of all, is to increase patient safety. First, is increasing the safety when moving the patient in and out of, or out of their home or other location into the ambulance, as well as when we move them from the ambulance. With this equipment that's being purchased, will significantly increase the safety for the patients, because they're not being carried or lifted by our personnel as much. Because of this, this reduces the likelihood of an accidental injury to the patient or of accidentally dropping them, which is always a risk whenever we are carrying them ourselves. They will also, once they're secured in the ambulance, these stretchers and load systems far exceed the national standard for safety and crashworthiness. Along with the safety restraints that are on the stretchers, they increase the safety for the patient, especially in the event of a collision. The other part is personnel safety. The stair chairs reduce the need for us to carry patients downstairs and around tight corners in order to get them out of their, their residence or whatever location they're at. The power stretchers all but eliminate the need for us to lift or lift the stretcher with the patient on it, as well as lift and load the patient into the ambulance. For this, this all culminates into an overall reduction of injury, the likelihood of injury to fire personnel. So, a little background on, on that. And the reality is, one out of every four medics will suffer a career-ending back injury within the first four years of their career. This is a significant risk factor for our personnel when you take into account, we have over 300 people currently working for us. There are services that have implemented the same system across the nation. Two that I'd like to highlight real quickly. Norman Regional Health System in Norman, Oklahoma implemented the same system. They did a study prior, retrospective study prior to implementation, and then after they implemented, looked at what the results were. During the two years prior, they had 10 injuries resulting from lifting injuries. In the, in the next five years, they had zero lifting injuries. This resulted in estimated over $500,000 savings in workers' comp claims. And it also resulted in, and most significantly, in people not getting hurt and not risking their career. Ada County Paramedics in Boise, Idaho had the same results in 2013 when they implemented. In the, two years after implementation, they went to zero back injuries as well. So, this is just an example of the equipment. The stair chair here up on the top, as you see the, the rollers on the back, they actually bear the weight of the patient here. The, they're the, that's the system actually holding the weight. It holds the weight of the, the stretcher of the patient and equipment that may be carrying, we may be carrying for the patient. And then, that's the, actually, how it would look secured into the ambulance. So, what we're asking for, we currently have a few power stretchers that we had previously purchased. So, the, the purchase here would be 20 power stretchers, along with 22 power load systems, and 15 stair chairs. We all, we already have seven stair chairs that meet the requirements of what we're purchasing. And I did make a mistake on this slide. It is not a three-year warranty. It is a seven-year warranty that's in there. So, this, this is a seven-year warranty and preventive maintenance. There's anything that happens with those stretchers, if we need new batteries, if we need just about anything except for the straps and the mattress, it will be, it would be taken care of by Stryker. The total cost for this project, this project is $1,348,036.91. The county match portion for this with the AFG is $126,881.82. And those funds have been identified and are available. At this time, if you have any questions for me?
Sure, well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion? And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Very good to see that presentation. Okay, well, we'll move into another public safety, but this was with the Police Department. And this is a resolution to approve the purchase of, of some Duraforce body camera phones plus equipment. And we'll let Captain Randall McGlamry actually make that presentation, so welcome this evening.
Good evening, board, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution. This resolution is requesting the approval of the purchase of 180 Caracera, excuse me, Verizon KSCR Duraforce Pro 2 body cameras, plus equipment for patrol and SOD vehicles, 35 Verizon jet packs for CID, 118 dash camera systems for the Henry County Police Department. This resolution includes a contract addendum, addendum with the Visual Labs body camera vendor to align all the build services to be due in July. So, we have found new and innovative ways to use our body cameras in other areas of the Police Department. And as we've added those, the bills due at different parts of the year. So, to keep finances happy, and we want to keep it all due in July. So, this is just basically an addendum to the contract to make sure everything is due in July. It also allows the Henry County Police Department to use $29,426.88 from the federal seeds funds account to pay for the following upgrades in equipment and licenses. We will be purchasing 180 Caracera Duraforce Pro 2 body cameras. This is basically an upgrade from Verizon to our, to the upgrade to the newest model at $50 each. It will upgrade all body cameras to the newest model and bring our Criminal Investigation Division onboard with the body camera system. They have not been on the body camera system, and now they want to be in on it. It will also purchase 118 Visual Labs dash camera systems. The purchase of the equipment licenses for the new dash camera system that works in tandem with the current body camera system for simultaneous viewing, live viewing, and consistent quality. When the officer initiates a recording with the body camera system, the dash camera will also turn on. The old system, we'd have to hit several different buttons, so this also improves the safety of the officer. We'll equip uniformed police officers with dash cameras that work with the current dash camera, body camera system. It securely stores video evidence to cloud storage. It puts multiple systems under one software program that is web-accessible to department personnel and prosecutors. We have been operating under multiple programs and software programs, so you have to go here for this and here for that. This brings it all into one system. We'll also be, this includes 35 Verizon jet packs, which provides mobile access to the internet and the Tyler Mobile Communication System for the detectives in the field. Are there any questions?
Okay, well, we thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now moving to our next item, which is a stormwater resolution to approve the bid award for the construction of the steeple-chase subdivision storm drain repair. We invite up Ms. Frances O'Leary. I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce your name correctly, but she's our civil engineer in our stormwater department, so we welcome you this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, Chair, and good evening, board members. And this resolution is for steeple-chase. The stormwater department identified the need. So, we identified the need for a storm drain repair and a steeple-chase subdivision. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department per bid number 20-27 for construction and repair to an existing storm drain and steeple-chase of division. Seven seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding is available in the stormwater account. Kind of hard to see, but the little red line shows the proposed location for the storm drain repair. And staff recommends awarding bid number 20-27 for storm drain construction and repair in a steeple-chase of division to AM Construction in the amount of $91,846.50. Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Clement?
Do you guys expect any change orders with this, or is this the final amount with this?
We don't expect anything, but, no, so far, I don't think we're going to expect any change orders.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor? Okay, thank you. It passes on five.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we now will move into our next item, which is a financial services resolution to approve the bid award for the solid waste removal and disposal services for various county locations. And we invite up Mr. David Smith, our Director of Financial Services, for that presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Sir Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County community. What you have before you is a resolution awarding the bid for solid waste removal and disposal services for various county locations. The current contract will expire on December 31st of this year. Seal bids were solicited, three bids were received. Waste Pro of Doraville, Georgia submitted the lowest overall bid. That is shown in the tabulation sheet that you have in your package. Staff recommends a reward, an annual contract for solid waste removal and disposal services to Waste Pro. This will be a one-year unit-priced contract with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. What questions do you have for me?
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion? And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. It passes unanimously. As previously stated, item 15B was removed from the agenda, and that was the resolution regarding the... and that was the resolution, um, regarding the contract for a compliance order of the cable franchise fees. And then, of course, as we made a note, um, the items sixteen A and B were also removed from the agenda, which were planned in zoning hearings. And so we'll advance now to item sixteen C, which is the City of Locust Grove Annexation Notification. And we'll invite up our County Manager Sherry Hopson Matthews for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. As Sheriff Wood has indicated, this is a annexation request or, um, annexation evaluation for informational purposes only. Um, as you all will have in your package, um, there was an annexation request that was received from the City of Locust Grove, um, earlier this month for, um, two parcels of land totaling forty-eight point three eight plus or minus acres. The property is located at three forty-two Davis Lake Road, which is located just to the east of Davis Lake Road across from Calvin Drive. As you can see, um, the property is in it, or is contiguous to parcels that are already currently located within the municipal boundaries of the City of Locust Grove. You have the City of Locust Grove to the north. You have unincorporated Henry County to the south and east. And then to the west, you have the City of Locust Grove. The City of Locust Grove is seeking to annex the property and the current zoning of RA will remain in place. See here a future land use map, which does designate the property for future medium-density residential. And again, the current land use is a single-family residential undeveloped. This is again for informational purposes and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the presentation, are there any questions? Okay, here are none, seeing none. We appreciate that informational update, so thank you. Okay, well, we'll now move into the, um, Board of Commissioners items. And the first one, um, is a resolution authorizing the use of, um, fund balance for improvements at Hidden Valley Park. And we've invited up Mr. Brad Johnson for that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again. Uh, asked by District Five Commissioner to, to look at the upgrades of Hidden Valley Park and doing so, came up with the, uh, request to use operational funds transferred into the Recreation Department for capital improvements and record, and maintenance for Hidden Valley Park, uh, that is not budgeted in the normal Recreation FY20 budget. We're requesting, um, the funds from operations be allocated to the Recreation Department for not to exceed prices for a construction of a bathhouse concession at two hundred and fifty, resurface a strike parking lot, not to exceed thirty, two pickleball courts, not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars, resurface four tennis courts at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand, landscaping costs not to exceed twelve thousand. Total, uh, request would be to allocate operational funds into the Recreation unfunded capital line item for three hundred and nine, not to exceed three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation and so at this time, um, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Commissioner Holmes, I appreciate the fact you want to repair one of your parks, but there's a number of parks in the county that needs some improvements. So I would like to see, let's come up with a, let's see if people all our parks and let's combine all these, so I would like to make a, uh, recommendation. We'll modify that resolution, include all parks.
Okay, we've heard some questions, other questions or comments? Uh, Commissioner Clements?
Sherry's presentation was really good with the reflection for the year. One of the things that I wrote down was that, is our fund balance eighty-two million?
Yes, ma'am, but that does not include the forty million that we have restricted, nor about thirty million that we have in assignedments that we've made.
So, huh, so what are we talking about? Because I think that's a good idea.
We're talking about, we're talking about remaining that we could is about four million, but this wouldn't require the actual use of fund balance. It's our actual operational funds, it's coming before you, uh, because it's, we need to let you know that this is a large item that's unbudgeted.
So this is not out of fund balance?
No, it's not out of fund balance, it's out of our regular cash balance. But because it was unbudgeted and such a large item, we wanted to make certain we came before you with this request.
So we're looking at, um, each district will get an additional four hundred thousand for parks and rec, based on what Commissioner Wilson is saying. So that's good, that's a good thing, I just wanted to ask, okay.
So I'm not sure that's, that's correct, Commissioner, uh, Clements. I think that the request for, for that, that, um,
And give you four hundred.
Three hundred and ninety-four for this park, for the upgrades for this particular park, is coming out of some overage, or I guess, out of operational. In the past, we have used fund balance and made adjustments at the end of the year. However, some of the correct financial that we're moving towards our financial policies from, from, uh, Mr. Smith is using right now, as we show in our operational reports every month, that we're trending, should be trending fifty percent in January first. So we might be trending forty-eight percent, so use some of that savings, we have operational budget for this project. However, I think the CIP that Commissioner Wilson is mentioning is a overall countywide CIP that goes into maintenance and capital for all parks. And we do that every year. We, we do a comprehensive analysis of every park and just to find the needs. We have about four million dollars, four point eight million dollars in needs in our parks right now for capital and maintenance. Uh, that was part of our capital that we presented to the board about eight months ago, uh, for, for funding and avenues. I, I, I don't think that the, the overall operational has a four hundred thousand per district allocated in operations, uh, for that. Uh, if that's the direction she was mentioning before, I just want to, I want to make sure we're clear on that and not, not there.
Okay, wait a minute, Commissioner Clements, uh, still has the floor. Okay, um, Commissioner Holmes, yes?
I specifically requested, um, um, the money to be, um, to come out of fund balance. Uh, David just said we had forty million, um, forty million, uh, unallocated. So I'm not sure why we would go into the, um, general fund operating budget to, um, you know, to do these upgrades.
What I explained, uh, Commissioner Holmes, is that our current fund balance amount is about eighty-two million dollars as we ended fiscal year twenty nineteen. We have a restriction of about twenty-five percent of that amount, which is close to a little over forty million dollars. We've also made several other restrictions when we had budgeted for this upcoming year. An additional five percent, which is another eight million dollars where we talked about, we wanted to maintain our triple-A rating. We also assigned several assignments for contingency, uh, once we reached mid-year. And so we actually have, in terms of the cash that we would have available to spend, that would be extra, anywhere between four and five million dollars after all of those various assignments. Included in those assignments are certain, uh, restrictions for if any legal expenses that we may have and potential contingencies.
Yeah.
And what I, what I was stating, uh, to Brad in our meetings was that operationally, what we'd like to do, we don't want to amend the budget if we operationally have the cash in our cash account to fund these amounts.
So we have the cash in our cash account, is what you're saying?
Yes.
What is the total we have in that account?
We currently have about a hundred and twenty-three million in our operating account.
And that's available?
That's for payroll, that's for all the, that's budget.
That's about six months, that's about six months of our operating expenses. I want to remind the Commissioner of that, four months we don't have cash coming in. We just, uh, started receiving our tax receipts. And about four months to five months out of the year, we don't have cash coming in and that's when we use that cash balance. But at this time of the year, is what I'm suggesting, is we're trending in terms of our operational spending. We are trending at under that fifty percent rate, which at this time, we're able to make adjustments to it. And at mid-year, sometime in January, if we need to make a budget amendment for any over expenditures that we may have, for any unplanned, unbudgeted expenditures that we may have, will come before you to make an amendment at that time. But this is available in an available amount in our operational budget, uh, to make that expenditure.
And Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner, the full board, if I could, um, definitely a learning opportunity for me also and David in bringing a, I guess, an enhanced financial knowledge to us. In the past, I'm going back a few years, we've always made amendments. Anything additional has been made out of fund balance. So we've been taking money, done all these fund, uh, amendments to our current budget and at the end of the year have a surplus of money left over. What David's saying, instead of making these amendments to the budget and have surplus, you have less surplus at the end of the year because we're using some of that funding now because we're under budget for openings for the first part of the year and stuff like that, not making amendments. They come up, have money left over and we make ten amendments taken out of savings accounts.
So basically what you guys are saying, that this three hundred and ninety-four thousand is readily available, um, and it won't hurt us at all to make these, um, to make these improvements to the park. And I understand Commissioner.
That's correct, Commissioner.
I understand Commissioner, uh, Wilson's concerned, but Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson can bring a resolution for a park that needs improvement. But this park is, uh, in serious disrepair and we need to make these improvements to the park.
Okay, um, okay, Commissioner Barn?
Yes, Brad, um, you, you mentioned that we had like four million dollars worth of repairs that we need for us capital.
Yes.
Uh, out of those, out of that four million dollars, these five items, how many of these items are on the list?
Uh, uh, the list is preliminary, Commissioner, I do, several of these items are on the list, um, of upgrades for Hidden Valley. But it's comprehensive and, and, and that list is, again, they're still doing all this. As you mentioned before in the meeting, that they were out of Heritage today or whenever you seen them today or yesterday out doing that, that list.
Are y'all in the process of reevaluating all the parts at this time?
So we, we do this yearly. Uh, the last CIP we brought to you guys, the capital improvement maintenance, uh, I think it's about eighty-nine months ago, uh, was evaluated, we had a number, it contains the roofs, it contains everything, all county buildings. So all two hundred, uh, entities we have, it does incorporate, uh, maintenance for countywide, everything, not just the parks, but Cal County buildings. But the section with recreation, we know, we have recreation areas that are not being maintained, are funding for maintaining, that, uh, are part of that presentation we've made.
Now, I certainly want to put you on the spot, but do you happen to know how much money we're talking about in repairs at Cochran Park? Out of this four million?
I do not have that, that information with me. I can, I can send it to you, it's what has been presented.
I, I certainly want to, uh, support Commissioner Holmes and his endeavor to, uh, do these repairs, but I would like to see the overall plan for all our parts and y'all sit down with each commissioner and let's bring something back and let's just do a package deal and try to get all this fixed one time. That's my thought.
Okay, um, I think I heard Commissioner Thomas, yes?
I did, I'm going back to something that Commissioner Clements had alluded to. So if we pass this three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, do you have enough money left for each district to have three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars? Because all of our parks need some type of upgrades. And if not, then we need to consider what Commissioner, um, Barn just stated. We need some type of comprehensive plan brought to us and not piece by piece, but the whole system and determine what can we spend in each district for upgrades in parks. So all of us are waiting, our turn, to see what we can do with our parks and our districts.
Yes, ma'am, I'm clear.
So if not, are you saying you have this three hundred and ninety-four thousand, but you can't guarantee you, you have three hundred and ninety-four thousand for me?
I can guarantee we do not have that in operational budget for each commissioner, for each district having that. And I welcome, Rodney Commissioner, we did bring the comprehensive plan, uh, I think at least three times to, in the last eighteen months to move forward. So Commissioner Holmes asked to go ahead and move this forward on his part to, to get Hidden Valley.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, here are none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. It fails. All right, we will now move into the next item, um, which is a resolution regarding the stormwater funds to make infrastructure repairs at Cochran Park. Um, I'll make that presentation. Um, basically, on November the nineteenth, um, the Board of Commissioners ba- basically, um, adopted a resolution that stated that if the City of Stockbridge, um, would accept the conveyance of Cochran Park, um, then the infrastructure of Cochran Park, uh, would, um, would, would actually move forward if the City of Stockbridge accepted that. Um, since that time, um, the City of Stockbridge responded to that resolution and basically, it was dated December the twelfth. Um, and it basically states that, uh, the city, um, basically wants a short, a longer-term resolution. Um, they do support the, the necessary short-time resolution. However, they, they want a longer term to work with the county to convey ownership and responsibility of the park and actually spoke about it for, you know, uh, to assess it over five years per se. Um, so since that time, I suggest that we actually introduce a, a new resolution, um, to, um, regarding Cochran Park. And it basically suggests that, um, the county goes ahead and moves forward, um, to improve the park. Let me actually pull it up. Um, to actually improve the park, um, and to, um, actually, um, since it, I'll just read the resolution just to be clear. Um, so on November nineteenth, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution, um, to authorize the expenditure of stormwater fees to repair the infrastructure of Cochran Park, subject to certain conditions. The city has not accepted the offer of conveyance to Cochran Park under the terms set forth in that resolution and the infrastructure of Cochran Park remains in need of repair. And the county, through the Board of Commissioners, has determined that it is in the best interest of the city and its citizens to make the necessary repairs, such that youth baseball operations may return to the park at the earliest opportunity. The resolution further states that now it be therefore resolved that this county manager is hereby authorized and directed to use sufficient stormwater funds to affect the necessary infrastructure repairs at Cochran Park, such that youth baseball operations may return to Cochran Park at the earliest opportunity. And that is the statement of the resolution. Um, each of you should have a copy of that in front of you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have questions.
Um, Commissioner Barn and then Commissioner Clements?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, I appreciate you putting this resolution together. Uh, one thing that this resolution does not address is the issue with the scoreboards. So how are we gonna address that issue moving forward?
Um, in my opinion, that would be something that would be directed towards the county management to come up with that, um, that statement, um, and response back to, at least, in order for the baseball teams to play, they're gonna need a scoreboard. So, um, yes, this speaks specifically about the stormwater repairs, but we've got to make it operational as well. Okay, Commissioner Clements?
And that's my concern, um, is the resolution, I, I've read it, but it doesn't, um, speak about, um, City of Stockbridge participation in the, in the park. So basically, this resolution says that we put the stormwater stuff in, but it doesn't talk about the rest of the stuff that has to happen, how much more money we would have to spend and how Stockbridge will participate in the process. And I think the whole thing was that we wanted to make sure that Stockbridge was gonna have some ownership in this park. And so, and I'm glad you put it in here because your resolution states that Stockbridge does not want any ownership of the park.
All right. Okay, so this is the resolution that we have for us. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner?
Something that I have is that you got a proposal from Stockbridge. And I was wondering if the county manager, anyone, did you all put any numbers to what they had asked us to do about this five-year plan? What that would cost the county since, or did they give you any numbers? Are you in a cause for a need of, uh, additional assessments for other repairs? Were any numbers placed in it to this proposal for either side, from either side?
Um, Commissioner Thomas, there were no numbers that were proposed by the City of Stockbridge. Um, staff operated off of the resolution that was approved by the board in terms of offering the park to the City of Stockbridge. So no numbers were, um, evaluated on staff's side as well, either.
So we have nothing to consider to add to this, uh, letter that we received?
No, ma'am, there are no additional numbers.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Clements?
Somebody tell me why we're still talking about this when we've already passed a resolution that we would do whatever is necessary to bring this park up to, uh, capacity of operating at full repairs? If Stockbridge take the park, why are we still talking about this? Why is this before us again?
Well, it is because in the resolution that this Board of Commissioners approved, it stated that only would this, the repairs move forward if the City of Stockbridge accepted the ownership. That's why we're having to bring it back, because now, we didn't get a statement that says that the City of Stockbridge is on it. Um, so that's why it's back before us again today.
And so therefore, it goes back to what, uh, Commissioner Barn said, if we're gonna do this parking, we don't, now we're doing more than that. It was at first gonna be a partnership with Stockbridge, we would bring it up to what we needed and then they would take it from there. We gotta do all the parks then. So I don't know why we're talking about, now we're going back and forth and it, it's really, um, making us look bad. talking about, now we're going back and forth and it, it's really, um, making us look bad. And I don't want this dysfunction from around the state of Georgia to be rolling up in here in Henry County. Once we make a decision and we voted on something, you know, I don't know why we keep bringing it back and forth and why we're debating after this board has made a unanimous decision. And why would we go back on a decision that we've already made?
Well, um, a couple of things. The reason this is coming back is because the city of Stockbridge did not accept the ownership of it. Second of all, um, because of that, um, if we as a board do not act upon, uh, uh, action regarding Cochran Park, then there will be no baseball operations moving forward. Um, if we don't act now, that's why it's being discussed now, then, um, that definitely puts the, 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 the children, um, in a place where they're not able to pay by the spring, and that's why it's become an issue back to us. So it is a resolution. Any other questions? Okay, sure.
I just want to make a correction. Um, the children will be able to play, they just won't be able to play at Cochran Park, if this does not.
Okay.
They will be able to play. I want to make sure that that doesn't get out, that the children won't be able to play, because that's a, that's not a factual statement. They won't be able to play at Cochran Park, but we do have other parks that they can play in. And I think that the county has to be able to put that message out. We have to write our own story. We didn't close down baseball in Henry County. So I just want to make sure of that.
And I accept that correction. So thank you. Okay, um, Commissioner Thomas, were you about to make a statement?
Well, I just wanted to make a statement that, uh, this actually empowers the, uh, county manager to go back and do what she said she did. The county manager made the statement that, based upon an assessment from her staff, based upon a report that she received, she made the decision to close the park. So that's the county manager. The commissioners didn't do that. The county manager owned it, she stood before us and said, "That's it." The county manager came back at a different time and said, "Well, we can fix this internally. We just need five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have the manpower, we can make this happen." She made that statement. So I'm saying, now that the county manager has owned this, has made a decision that she can make this happen, let's put her back in position with the power to do it and say, "Okay, here is the money, make it happen expeditiously," and the county manager needs to stand back up again and say, or sit down, whatever you choose, and say, "It has been corrected and it's open." Because this is who says she had the power to do it, let's empower her to make another decision.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, here in nine, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions, comments, or thoughts? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that was four in favor, two opposed. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into our public comments section, and this is the time where we allow those who come in and sign up prior to the meeting to be granted five minutes to, um, speak on matters that they, um, would like to address with the Board of Commissioners. And so we ask right now, how many, um, public comments do we have?
There are five public comments tonight.
Okay.
Bill Tony, John Page, Robert Colpeck, Steve McLean, and Michael Parish.
Okay, thank you. We ask that you please come in that order and state your name and address, I mean, just your name, please, because you've already signed up with the clerk.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. Um, I, we were, our little group, Ethics and Government, we've been going over some properties owned by the county, properties that need to be sold or just done away with, whatever we need to do. I've talked to Mr. Wilson and I've talked to Mr. Barn about getting rid of some of these properties. I'm thinking I might have been Miss, Miss Clemens too, but I don't think anything's ever happened about it. Y'all just, it's just deaf ears. So, we were going through, um, rental properties that the county owns, and I think every one of y'all got one of these, uh, a copy of it. And we'd notified y'all of, uh, on November the twenty-seventh about the property in question. Now, the property is at Nash Farms. All right. I own rental properties around the county. I've looked at the house, we own it, it's at Nash Farms, fair market value. If I own that house, I would have it on the market for a thousand dollars a month. So that's twelve thousand dollars a year. Well, the renter that's in there is paying two hundred dollars a month. What can you get for two hundred dollars a month? So, we went, you know, we got, got to thinking about this thing and, uh, now let me put a picture of the house down there, because this is county property. Not a, not a bad, uh, not a bad deal, but from what I understand, it's county employees that rent the house. Well, that threw up some more questions. All right, if they're paying two hundred dollars a month and the fair market is a thousand dollars a month, they're being compensated over nine thousand dollars a year. Makes sense? I hope it does. Because if I, if I work for the county and I take home a car just for me to use, you're gonna give me a ten ninety-nine for it, I'm sure. So, somebody is being compensated. Well, the thing about it is, what I couldn't believe, this has been going on for nine years. They've rented this thing for two hundred dollars a month for nine years. Okay, so that is eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars of money that we didn't get here. Now, I don't know how somebody got this sweet deal. I really don't, but it is a sweet deal. Now, I looked at it and I, and I thought about your response. I know you're not gonna respond to me, but I'm gonna go ahead and throw it out there. If it was a response, these are county employees, and they say, "Well, they're gonna be looking at the property and they're gonna be keeping up with it." Okay, then that means that that you have to pay the man overtime because he's an employee and God knows what you're gonna come up with. Now, to be honest with you, this has happened before. It wasn't government. Uh, this funeral home let a guy sleep or stay in the basement of his place for years, rent-free. So he told the guy for several years to move out. The guy moved out and sued him for overtime because he worked there part-time, sued him for overtime and won the case. Now, I don't know about the county attorney or how this thing works out, but I tell you what, y'all don't need to let this stuff fall on deaf ears. He needs to do his job, y'all need to do your job. And Miss Clemens, this is in your district, lady. I can't believe that you're more interested in getting rid of a Confederate museum than you are taking care of business. Need to take care of business. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Robert Colpeck.
I'm sorry, the name again?
John Page.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, John Page.
Good evening.
Two-six-seven Fanning Lane, McDonough, Georgia. And I believe you all have a copy of what I sent earlier to your, I don't know how long I can read that. What I'm here about is, I'm concerned, and I've got a statement, in fact, I've been reviewing the county commissioners' agendas and videos of the commission as far as for the, uh, last year or so, and almost every meeting, as far as, we've got each and every one of you stating, "We want to control growth." Well, residents of Henry County don't like the timetable, or would like to know a timetable of when you will control growth. And when will you start? The residents of the county want a moratorium on large home developments. The residents request the county revert back to an old item which was used a number of years ago, and I believe it's quite a few years ago, a two minute, two acre minimum. The residents demand that this go into effect immediately as far as January one, two thousand twenty. The residents request, if you cannot agree upon a moratorium, we request that you resign tonight. The residents have watched and listened of the ideas of controlled growth and it's not worked. The residents requested a resignation tonight or reinstate a two-acre minimum-sized lot on large home developments. And they're basing this also on the fact that the county has taken, and it's on my other sheet here. Our residency has grown from two thousand and ten, from two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two, to two thousand and eighteen, to two thousand, three hundred, three thousand, or three hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. Our enrollment on our schools this past year are forty-two thousand students. We've got roughly twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight residents, eleven, thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-nine, one hundred and forty-nine homes, new homes since two thousand and ten, and new students since two thousand and ten, ten, ten thousand, one hundred and forty-three. And since January first, we've got approximately nine thousand new residents, as far as in the first six months. We've got approximately from that, thirty-four hundred and sixty-one students, okay? In the first eight years, we've seen a fifty percent growth in our population here, okay? But in the last six months, we've seen a sixty-eight percent growth. That is not controlling growth, especially when it inundates our school system, our fire departments, our police departments, and SXS needs for services that you're not able to render. So either create a moratorium or resign, and if you don't, I believe we will have a little bit of an uproar from some of the other residents that aren't here that are willing to sign a petition to ask that you do resign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you'd like to make a comment, I would accept it.
We're gonna proceed on, sir, thank you.
Of course you don't.
Good evening, Board, and Merry Christmas to you guys.
Good evening and Merry Christmas.
Thank you for the Christmas present tonight reopening, repairing Cochran Park.
Name, please.
Sorry, Robert Colpeck, I'm McDonough, Georgia. This is a picture at Hidden Valley Park. I was told a couple of weeks ago that it was gonna be repaired, and that's still there as of, uh, this weekend. It's right by the ballfields and
Right by.
The playground. And I got a concern with that is that we have a basketball court that I asked not to be tore down because it really wasn't in bad a shape, it just needed a little bit of repair. And in the same time that this hasn't been touched, which is a security or a safety concern, that's what the basketball court now looks like. Now, behind there is a, um, batting cage, which you can't see off the picture, is that there's a pavilion that's now blocked, which pavilion could have had a church gathering, could have had a scout meeting, because it was covered, and you could have had seating. Now it's blocked by this new batting cage, which for, well, I knew was this now vacant property is gonna have another batting cage. So a lot of batting cages going on at Hidden Valley Park. Not sure why this, the picture is of a refreezer. It's unlocked freezer, and it's outside the concession stand. I don't know if it was inside the concession stand or not, or somebody dropped it. But that's what the inside of the freezer looks like. I don't know if we have anybody working at Hidden Valley Park or who's accountable for the park. I've asked this since basically, I think, March, like, I need a little help there, and I know tonight there was a proposal. But over the years, Hidden Valley's been neglected, as Cochran has been. And I've asked before, "Let's do a comprehensive park, and let's get a budget together so we can fix all the parks so we make them look nice." Hasn't been done, and this is, you know, what you commonly see at Hidden Valley Park. I don't think that anybody's dumped it, um, that's just what they allow. And back at the cord, which I don't have a picture of, uh, in front of you, but it's, uh, also ripped, you know, tore. So it was plugged in, it could be a safety hazard on plugging it in. And one last thing, the, uh, last meeting, I brought up a picture of a pickle, and it came out wrong, and I apologize if it came out wrong. I, I should not have tried to make a joke, but what I was gonna say, to clarify, was, anybody that could design a, a pickleball park in the shape of a pickle is, is, that's awesome. Came out wrong, I didn't mean to offend anybody, and if I offended any of the commissioners, I apologize. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to be respectful and treat you guys with dignity and respect. I may not like some of the stuff that is done, I'll speak up, I'll speak to you professionally, and then I'll walk away. So apologize for that. Again, thank you for your time, thanks, and you guys have a wonderful holiday. We'll see you after probably the first of the year.
Thank you.
Last two are Steve McLean. And Michael Parish.
Good evening.
My name is Steve McLean, I live at two hundred Twin Oaks Drive, Hampton, Georgia. Uh, I own roughly thirteen and a half acres that borders the backside of Nash Farms. There's been a couple of events here recently, uh, in the past couple of months, where the noise level is so loud at three hundred plus yards from, from my house to where they're doing this, it's eight-inch log, eight-inch log home. I can't, I have to turn up my TV, it's so damn loud, excuse my language. But it's, it, it, there's no reason for the, the noise to be at that level. The first time they did this was a Sunday night, and they went till eleven o'clock. So all the kids that lived along that park were at the up because the noise levels, you couldn't go to sleep. The second time, it went till eleven thirty, it was a Saturday night, but again, the noise level was so loud that you couldn't enjoy peace and quiet around the park. I, I think it's great they're using the park, that's what the park was there for. Uh, we just need, uh, a little respect for the, the, the members of the county that live around it and lower the noise level, or at least point the speakers back towards Jonesboro Road. It is, is, is ridiculous. You can't hear yourself thinking. Uh, we have sent emails and we have contacted our commissioner. We've got really no responses back so far on what can be done. I've gone to Parks Recreation, they said they have no control over it since it was our commissioner Dee provided the permit. I went to Special Permits, they said it should have ended by ten o'clock, and then they had from ten to eleven to clean up at the park. That's not the case. It went till eleven o'clock, blasting, uh, the first time, eleven thirty the second time. And I would really like to bring attention to this and see if we can get this addressed. The park is there, uh, they use it all the time, they're out there jogging, they're out there, you know, they do the kind, the runs. Uh, it can be a little loud at that time, but it's usually, you know, it's just in the morning. But this starts at ten o'clock at night, I mean, in the morning, and is now running to ten, eleven o'clock at night. It's just too much. And we, we really like a response back on this.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, then our final.
Michael Parish.
What become that?
Uh, good afternoon.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody, uh, chair, board, commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Michael Parrish, I live at one-forty-four Ventura Trail Stockbridge, Georgia, three-oh-two-eight-one. I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everybody and for all the commissioners that done the right thing tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna bag up a little bit. About five months ago, me and three, three other coaches were asked to join, uh, to join Hidden Valley Park. And we was told that's where the money is gonna be spent. And I find it quite ironic tonight that anybody could come up and ask for three-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars to put into Hidden Valley Park, and we have a park on North Herring that's closed. But the plan that we was gave five months ago, it came to play tonight. And I'm just kinda wondering, was this a plan from the word go? Just like we bought a crow report up here that we thought was fraudulent? This whole thing is, it stink. It really do. And it's upsetting that somebody in the county, I'm not calling names, could bring this type of stuff to taxpayers. And I am a taxpayer and I live in Stockbridge. But all this came together tonight as far as the dollar go. All of a sudden, we find money under the mattress, shoeboxes, we find money in the attic, we find money in the gun shed, on the, on the floor mats in the car, money everywhere. And I'm upset about it. Cause what we were told five months ago came to play tonight. And how do you play with the youth? How do you play with taxpayers? I just don't understand it. Something not right here. Something is not right here. And I have another selection I'm gonna bring here, and it's not, it's not for tonight, but I'm here to tell you, something is not right here. And I do not like it. And I'm not the only one. And I'm upset about it. Because I felt like along the other coaches, we were played with from the word go. The plan that happened tonight, we got five months ago. How? Commissioners, this is not right. We gotta take our personal stuff and leave it in our car. What we gotta do is right for the kids, the taxpayers, the youth. And one thing about me that upset me, when you play with the youth and the elderly, I got a problem with it. It's not right. It say a lot about a person that can do that. And you know, sometimes a louder person in the room is not correct. But we gotta put our best foot forward, we gotta do the right thing. That's what's gonna make Henry County grow. That's what gonna make Henry County shine. Not our personal needs and our personal vendettas. People, I say this in the city of Stockbridge. The back and forth, rhetoric, the chatter, the bickering, it need to stop. We can't get nothing done arguing. You gotta come to a common ground, you gotta work out the problems. But we shouldn't be here six months arguing about the youth. How? The youth are the future. What we arguing about? What's the fight about? It shouldn't be a fight. That park was closed for the wrong reason. And I'm not done with the park, I know everybody probably tired of it, I am too. But I deal with twenty kids that's calling me, asking me, are we playing baseball? You know, things brought up tonight about Henry County and closed baseball out of Henry County. Yeah, it wasn't. But you uprooted over, over twenty-seven hundred kids that go to another park, that can barely get to the park that it was coming to. Anytime you move a kid, parent that's struggling to get their kid to a park that's five miles from their houses, hey, go to a park that's nine miles. You can barely make it to a park that's five miles. How can, how can I make it to the park that's nine miles? See, you gotta have a heart. Everybody can't afford to buy a pack of cookies every day. People, use your heart. Leave personal stuff at home. Some people can't afford, like I told you earlier. Me and Coach buy some people meals. Not even baseball season right now, I'm still helping out. I wanna do the right thing. I'm not a politician, but I care about human life. A lot of people in here care too. But you know, some of us strike me funny. We come in here, we put a show on, some people do. Let me go to church on Sunday. I don't understand that. Make me wonder who you're worshiping, really do. How you not love the youth, but you're in somebody's church dancing and praising? I would never enter that church. And that's just my personal opinion, Michael Parrish. But I'm asking everybody right here, God allows, wake up this morning, do the right thing. He gave us another chance. Nobody here perfect, but we need to try to strive to be perfect. Try to help. Let's take the personal stuff and get, don't bring, don't come back in here twenty-twenty with the same nonsense. Nobody needs it. The youth, elderly, nobody needs it. People need help. I've been coming here for six months, over six months, talking about the same thing. And folks ask me, are you arguing about a youth park? How much you making? I'm gonna pray for everybody in here tonight, whether you want me to or not. But people, if you're doing the wrong thing and you know you are, you need to get it right. And something happened last commission to me about the code and ethics rules. I was so glad it came out. Because there's so many people working with Henry County that scared to tell what's going on. There's a lot of them. And I got ten of them wrote down. And they gonna come here. Once I get them out of the little scary part, they coming to tell what's going on. Y'all will see me again.
Your time has expired. Thank you. So that concludes our public comments section at this time. We'll now move into the commissioner comments section. Are there any comments from commissioners?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
Um, Sherry, um, I wanna address this issue with Nash Farms and the county employee that's staying there. Um, when I first got in office, I asked about the property there. And as soon as I found out that this was a county employee who is also a veteran, I vowed to make sure that I joined the ranks of everybody else that is protecting veterans from homelessness. We have a veteran standing in that home and their dependents that's standing in that home. And if someone has served in our military and had, or is serving in our military and this county has an opportunity to open up doors and allow them to stay in the home with lower rent, then I think we're doing a good job. I would like to commend you guys, empower you to do more of helping the homelessness veterans in our community. And I will stand by making sure that that veteran can stay in that home as long as he wishes. We need to put policies in place, and I don't know if there's a lease, I don't know what's going on with that. I think we did have a lease, that's why people know how much it is. But make sure that we're protecting our veterans. And thank you for allowing the veteran to stay in the home on the property. And, and I, how dare somebody ask us to put them out? How dare you come into this board meeting and ask us to evict a veteran who has served in the military? I think, now, this happened, I don't know, I don't know how long ago.
Okay, we're gonna stop, stop, stop.
I don't know how long ago, um,
County manager.
County manager, I don't know how long ago that this happened. But this happened way before Commissioner Dee got in office. Nobody came in here and asked to evict the veteran. But because I'm in office now, they want me to be the bad guy and evict the veteran. And if they asked for it before then, I wanna know when. Cause he's been standing there probably longer than I've been in Henry County. So I thank you all for making sure that we protect the veterans of Henry County.
Okay. All right, excuse me, we will not, excuse me, sir, we will not have comments from the floor. Okay, this is commissioner's time. Okay, okay, we're gonna need to escort those out who are out of order today.
Put them out.
So thank you. We wanna be in order, so thank you.
You don't sanction anybody, nor do you sanction the veteran.
Okay, thank you. Please escort this gentleman out, he's out of order.
I wanna file a response.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner Clemmons, let's, let's remain in order. Let's remain in order. Okay, any other comments from Commissioner Clemmons before we go to Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, staff.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I just wanted to take a few moments and Merry Christmas to everyone here and to our citizens and those who've been coming for the year this ends. It's my first year here as a commissioner, and believe me, it has been an adventure, a challenge, and I can't think of all the adjectives I wanna use right now, but a lot of them. Uh, but one thing is for sure, when the county manager did the report tonight on the video, I didn't realize you guys had done so much and how much work actually gets done. And that was impressive to say to people, and I'm hoping it's published somewhere so they can pull it up, that we do a lot here in Henry County, and our goal is to serve the citizens. We won't get it perfect all the time. It's just impossible to make it perfect. But we're going to do our best to serve you, to listen to you, even when it hurts, we listen. So to the county staff, I wanna thank you all for the hard work you done in two thousand and nineteen. To our financial department, you all have put us in a triple-A bond rating, plus got another high financial status for the county, which means we can actually borrow money for like one point something, I think it is that he told me, has it gone lower? Uh, to make some revisions and some upgrades in the county, which is great for our status here. And thank you all for being patient with us as we try to move through all that's taking place. Because Henry County is growing. And as it grow, all we can do is try to shape and mold that growth. And in the process, we have some growing pains. So Merry Christmas, thank you for what you've done for us as citizens, and I thank you for being patient with us as well.
All right, thank you. Other comments, Commissioner Wilson, then Barron.
All right, Commissioner Thomas, you but took all the words, so, but I will echo exactly. Thank you, uh, county manager, staff and employees for job well done. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all.
Thank you. Commissioner Barron.
I'm pretty much gonna piggyback on everything said. I wanna wish our employees and our citizens and all my colleagues up here, I hope you have a Merry Christmas and, uh, I'm looking forward to two thousand and twenty.
Awesome. Commissioner Holmes.
Pleasure working with this group and I wanna say thank you to, um, county employees for everything you've done all year long. And we look forward to seeing you all next year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Okay. Well, I, I too want to just commend, um, this board and more importantly, the staff who's really working so hard, the countless hours that you all are putting in. And, um, again, having to respond to things, the other thing I was thinking about that you all have done so well is improve the response time back to citizens through that see, click, fix. Um, because we used to get a lot of concerns about, um, you know, delayed responses and tracking of what status is. So we, we appreciate what you're doing as well. Um, do wanna share with the citizens, um, again, transportation, um, transportation, transportation continues to be, um, a, a big focus and concern for our citizens. And I do wanna at least share with you all some updates regarding the I-seventy-five Bethlehem Road Interchange, the Western Parallel and Jonesboro Road. And basically, this is a statement from the, um, Georgia Department of Transportation Commissioner. And basically, um, what has been determined by GDOT is that they plan to advance this project of the I-seventy-five interchange in partnership with the City of Locust Grove's application to the Atlanta Region Commission for Federal PE Funding. And in addition to that, GDOT is going to provide an additional one million dollars. And they still do wanna work with the county to continue to advance that project. Regarding the Western Parallel, um, GDOT, uh, will continue to design the environmental studies and right-of-way plan for completion by spring two thousand and twenty. And, um, Henry County has agreed to acquire the right-of-way with a reimbursement commitment from GDOT of up to six million dollars. So again, um, that's the status of the Western Parallel. And then regarding Jonesboro Road, basically, it's gonna require, uh, GDOT says that it will remain in the long-range plan, but it, since it is a local road, Henry County should seek funds, uh, sources to advance the project. So, uh, we do, again, understand that our citizens are concerned about traffic and traffic congestion. Um, you see what has been happening with public safety to address, you know, um, crime prevention and safety for our employees. And, um, again, it is a very tough job trying to balance the growth that is happening here and has been happening, um, when you are, are actually experiencing the growth and you have property owners that you are trying to balance, um, things with as well. So again, I, I just want to say to my colleagues, um, it is, it's been my honor to serve. Um, and I do wish you all a very joyful and peaceful time as well, um, um, with you and your families and for our staff. I do hope that you're able to, to find that time for rest and, and, um, time. But I know we're also a twenty-four-seven by, a twenty-four-hour-by-seven-day-a-week operation. And I will say I'm very optimistic and looking forward to continuing to serve with this board and to, to kind of govern and support the staff. And we're always forward to help Henry County move in a positive direction. So again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all. So thank you all. So at this time, um, regarding the approval of the minutes, we have minutes from September the seventeenth, which was our regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and also our October the fifteenth, um, minutes, um, from a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. If there were no revisions or changes, we now open the floor for a motion to approve.
So move.
We have a motion. Second. And a second, um, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events, our next scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting will be held January the seventh at nine o'clock AM as a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And then our meeting, the second meeting in January will be January the twenty-first at six-thirty PM. And it too will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So if there's no other business that is due, we're now open for, for a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second. And a second. Um, anyone else has anything else to say? If not, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone, and the same to our citizens as well.